So how the conservative.
Such a proponent, such a proponent.
Hey, we ready to go? Okay, I'll call this February 25th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Glenwood Springs to order. This meeting is also held via Zoom. You can dial into 719-359-4580. Webinar ID 863-8055-0264. Okay, let's do the roll call.
Commissioner Collerton?
Here.
Commissioner Slipperleaf?
Here.
Chair Waller?
Here.
Commissioner Cowan?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Houghton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, any conflicts of interest? I won't make a snide remark about these.
How many years, how many years do we have to go back? Last week's? Okay. Okay, no conflict of interest. Okay.
So the next is a receipt of the minutes. Before we talk about them, let's have a motion on accepting the minutes.
I motion to accept the minutes from January.
Do you have a second?
Nudger Hughes?
Yeah.
Say. Hey, we have a second. By Commissioner Cowan, the comments on the minutes. additions, deletions.
Yeah. Just the IV, IV-4E and CFTC, I think on one page, but. I'm not sure to do it.
Okay. So we good?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's call the question then on the receipt, for the receipt of the minutes. Okay, let's, let's call the question then on the receipt, for the receipt of the minutes.
It passes five to one with one abstention.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next is any comments from citizens appearing for items not on the agenda. And no one's here. Do we have anyone online? I don't see any. Hands raised, so I think we're good. Okay, and we'll move on to our new item. Title 070 Code Amendment Including But Not Limited To Allowed Uses, Definitions, Natural Medicine Businesses, Shopping Centers, and Other Code Changes. Hannah.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission, Hannah Klausman, Community Development Director. So, we have a code amendment before you tonight that's got a couple pieces, so I'll kind of lay out what those are, and I've created them into two different action items for you to make it easy. This is more background on, I wanted to go here. So, action item one is the consideration of a code amendment to zone code standards for natural medicine businesses in Glenwood Springs. And action item two is the same code amendment, but to correct the zoning allowances for shopping centers. Looking at included as permitted use in M1 and special use in a couple other districts. So, we'll have you vote on those separately, and we can speak to them separately and do questions, but I wanted them all on the same thing for my convenience. Most important. So, we'll start off with our natural medicine businesses. This is just a little bit of the state background for you that was included in your staff report from the voter-approved Proposition 122 through several of the processes that the state set up to regulate these types of businesses. I did include the definitions for you in your staff report as well as a helpful article to help kind of explain what it looks like, just in case you had any questions, so we can reference that as well. So, the state set up, adopted a set of regulations for natural medicine businesses, and technically could maybe, January 1st, 2025 is the date that they could begin issuing licenses. So, that's the date that jurisdictions were given to have our zoning affairs in order. A little behind the curve, but we're still, still good on timing. So, the, the one point, and Carl can speak to any of the nuances of the state aspects, but state law prohibits local governments from disallowing natural medicine. So, that's just something to point out tonight that we are required to allow these types of businesses in the city. And really, what we're looking at for you tonight in consideration is the manner in which they will operate or can operate within the city of Glenwood Springs. So, it's not a, no, I don't want this. It's a, this is how I'd like it to operate sort of consideration. The state does have a pretty extensive set of rules. One of those that's important, that's already in the regulations, is the distance requirements of 1,000 feet from all childcare and school residential childcare facility-related uses. And that's using a direct pedestrian route. So, thank you, state, for making that very clear in how we're supposed to measure that. I appreciate that. We did have a work session with council at their January 16th meeting just to get kind of a feeling for what they are thinking and a lot of the same topics of discussion that a lot of other communities are looking at in hours of operation. And a little bit more, I can discuss that when we get to that section. Sure. I'm going to go through this pretty quick, and then we'll just open it up for questions. So, here is the actual proposed zoning that we are doing. So, there's Natural Medicine Center, which we have likened most to an office setting, an office use. So, you'll see that under the use category, we've actually included it in the Office, Business, and Professional Services section next to Administrative, Professional, or Government Office, Bank, Financial Institution, Printing and Copying Establishment. And made it similar to some of the uses there. And then also further down in our industrial section of our zoning table, natural medicine cultivation, manufacturing, and testing, which we are putting in the industrial section. We've zoned similar to some of the uses down there as well. So, for the Natural Medicine Center, which is more, if you've read the CPR article that was included, functioning very similar to like a therapist's office and medicinal offering within that setting. And we have started that as a permitted use in the residential transitional zone all the way up through some of our commercial and then excluding some of our industrial zones. And we can discuss the exact zoning allowances further with you guys. But I wanted to make sure that you kind of are comparing it next to some of those other professional office allowances, so you can see kind of how those are zoned within the city as well. And then the industrial uses, we put it as a special use permit in the M1 and permitted in our commercial and I2 zones. And we can discuss further what you guys think about that. The manner of operation consideration, so this is what was discussed with council, and you have an analysis in your staff report. So, the hours of operations that these businesses are allowed to operate, the number of permits within the city, and also distance buffer requirements. In your staff report on hours of operation, we point out, you know, we are considering this a very similar use to office, and we don't have hours of operation for those uses. They kind of naturally regulate to a okay period. But I do point out if, if Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council is interested in limiting hours for comparison purposes, our marijuana retail establishments are open from 8:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. That might be something, just a comparison point, if you're interested in that. As far as the number of permits, the city, I point out, the city does, also doesn't limit the number of therapy or medical treatment offices, but it is a component that City Council brought up for possible review. So, staff wanted to open that for planning and zoning consideration. If you think that this type of use is appropriate for a limitation, obviously, those have been discussions along the lines of marijuana establishments as well. What we've found there is the distance buffer regulations that are applied do help kind of limit the number, because they're similar to short-term rental permits that we have in the city. Once there's a buffer, there's only so many spots left that you can actually have an establishment. So, if that's something you guys want to further get into, we can certainly discuss that. And then distance buffer requirements, I've mentioned, the state has the 1,000-foot requirement from all of the school and childcare facilities already. And obviously marijuana has that as well, and then an additional distance buffer between the businesses of 1,000 feet. So, that's how that kind of shakes out, and community development keeps that map updated, so you can see it at any time on the city website. And we would do the same thing. We'd highlight the schools, and then if there's any additional distance buffer regulations added, we would maintain that map as well. This is transitioning into shopping centers. So, would you guys like to discuss? Should I go all the way through, or do you want to discuss mushrooms first and shopping centers later? Alrighty. I had a feeling. So, I'm just going to go back up to our code amendment. That is my very well-thought-out presentation, and I'm open to questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner White?
So, my first, my first question is, in the, in the zoning table, why is marijuana facilities a special use permit? And these type of facilities are, some of, some of the uses, like just permitted use?
That's a really great question. Thank you for asking. So, I wasn't here when the city of Glenwood Springs went through its marijuana zoning, but I was in a different jurisdiction at the same time. One of the major things that we look at with marijuana retail and cultivation facilities is the nuisance of smell, which is a big one, and they have a lot of mitigation that they have to do, and regulations stating that the smell can't leave the property boundary and be a nuisance on adjacent properties or the general public. So, usually when we have special use permits, that is allowing Planning and Zoning Commission the ability to be like, hey, this particular location might be appropriate, but there are certain impacts that are, you know, tied to this use, and we need to make sure that it is absolutely appropriate case by case because of those impacts. So, with this use on the natural medicine center side, we don't have that same impact. There's no, there's no smell associated with either the product or the medical treatment that is going on. So, staff did not view it as the same impact that needs that special use criteria review.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, do we have anyone that's in process of applying?
Not, not that we know of.
Okay.
Hey, thanks, Joy. Other questions? Commissioner Siperling?
Do you think we might expect a smell to come from the manufacturing or processing components that are allowed in the industrial zone?
Not in the same way that a marijuana cultivation facility actually has. So, this would be, if anything, more of a slight agricultural smell, just because there's agricultural products involved. But it hasn't been associated with any type of nuisance smell.
Okay, great. Okay, Commissioner Houghton?
Why is this? I guess, a question is, why is it not analogous to agriculture in general, right? And our table of allowed uses, that's only rural residential and hillside preservation. Why, why would we allow it in, in parts where other agriculture is not allowed?
Staff just actually saw it as a slightly different use from that, and so we applied different standards. But we're, you know, at this point with Planning and Zoning Commission, if you think it fits more appropriately into that zone, this is definitely the time to make that call.
Thank you.
And if you guys want, I can bring up the definitions for any of these uses. That's why I included the, the definitions that the state has in their regulations for how these businesses operate, and we can pull up our agriculture to expand on that. Like, staff actually viewed that as a slightly more intensive agricultural operation than what these are intended to be. Space-wise, yeah, impacts, so.
John, do you want to do that? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Hannah. A question about the, the micro treatment center versus just the general blanketing of a treatment center. As I understand it, the micro treatment would be someone who has an existing practice, and they want to incorporate this as, as a new therapy, new therapeutic model. Do we need to speak to that specifically? As a separate carve-out, or is that also included in what we're discussing here today?
We put those as one category of business, but you make a good point. So, the micro center, as you described, is where there's an existing therapy office, and they want to offer that as a service. Where my understanding with the other is that it would be more focused on that particular product. So, a psychedelic therapy office specifically, which is their specialty.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the way that we saw that is both are actually functioning and offering the same services. One is just focused on one particular type of medical offering.
So, I guess, so the, those folks are already established wanting to expand their practice, they would not be excluded from, there, it's inclusive, right? So, what we're looking at. Okay, thank you.
So, I, I just want to follow up a question similar to that. So, so, for example, ketamine, which I know, I know we have ketamine in town. So, so is that, is that basically what he's talking about would be, could be included in a ketamine treatment facility that would, they do mushrooms as well?
As long as they have the appropriate state licensure for that.
Right.
Yeah.
For the, from door and all that.
I mean, I think the other place you may see it come up is that. It's on.
Closer to the mic.
Closer to the mic. Sorry. The other place you might see it come up is an established, say, psychology practice, something like that, that is already seeing patients and treating them in a particular location, adding that as a component of what they offer, but not the primary thing that they offer. Which is actually where I think you're probably going to see it come up more than anything.
Commissioner White?
Hannah, would you pull up the zoning map and just kind of go over the areas where this would be permissible?
Yes. I happen to have the map pulled up. I knew you were going to answer. I can.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to reference my staff report, since I can't look at both at the same time. And we'll try and get you guys to see, see this. So, the natural medicine centers, which are the therapy offices offering the services, starts residential transitional. Let me actually get that. Can you guys even read that? Maybe, see the colors? It's, this is going to be a little bit hard, but I can zoom in. So, our residential transitional is the last, last zone district here, and it's the very light beige. Normally, this is seen as a transition between commercial uses and residential uses. So, it's not meant to be super-heavy commercial, really, as its name implies, meant to be a transition from kind of the multifamily developments into a commercial area. So, you will see some of these areas like this, which is, let me zoom in. Near Valley View Hospital area, there's a lot of residential transitional. Another great example is near Walmart, the, where, where the project that we refer to as Bell Rippey is, the apartment complexes, altitude apartment complexes. This is that residential transitional color. So, you'll see it very closely, usually it's next to our commercial zones. And then you'll see a transition between this to the lower-density residential districts, which are in these darker brown colors. So, it starts there. That's the only residential district that we've put it as a permitted use. Then it moves up into our commercial and mixed-use zones. Our M1, our M2, our M3. Funny enough, M3 is a zone district that exists with no land that is zoned M3. One day. One day, it will be. So, really, we're looking at M1 and M2. M2 is your denser downtown, and it's got some other areas as well, but is this kind of light pink color, the upside-down birthday cake. One thing that's good to point out, as I'm pointing to the downtown area, that has an overlay district on it, which is the downtown overlay district, and this would not be an allowed use in that district to be on the ground floor. If you guys remember the downtown overlay, we worked really hard to get those uses to be more vibrant, interactive businesses, retail, a little bit on the services side. And this would be, this would fall into the office category that we were trying to move away from this particular M2 zone district to other M2 offerings. So, you've got mixed-use corridor, which is M1, mixed-use core, which is M2, the M3, which is a regional mixed-use, which we do not have. Then we move into the more heavier commercial districts, which our CO, commercial district, is this darker purple. So, you can see this is on the outskirts of our downtown area and also in North Glenwood. I'm going to zoom out. We'll all have to get our glasses. So, you can see that that exists a little bit more in South Glenwood area as well. Obviously, if you're looking at this, you can see that it's more around commercially vibrant areas with lots of businesses. And, um, let's see here. Our resort district, that's an interesting one. We have it listed as permitted use there. It's a, it's more of an institutional zone district for large campus types of events. We don't have a lot of areas zoned that. It is the light, light, light blue that you see on this. So, this is actually over by the Hot Springs area, Iron Mountain. Sea Dot facilities are located here, a little bit across the way over in the Meadows area. So, mostly focusing around the commercial areas. And if I didn't focus on something, you want me to zoom in, let me know. That's for the medicine centers. And then, yes.
Question for you, one. So, the, the residential transitional, did, did we think that that was an appropriate zoning district mainly because of the hospital area there? I mean, where that Bell Rippey project, that seems totally inappropriate.
We felt that it was most appropriate, and we listed it as permitted use there because offices are allowed there.
Right.
So, there are existing, you know, therapy offices that exist in those zone districts now, and those uses are considered appropriate and have been that way for some time. And the way that we reviewed this, that's what we were likening them to as the closest use possible. So, then we adopted that as well. That's not to say that that can't change with discussion from P and Z and City Council, but that's where we started.
That makes sense.
And I will say, a lot of the communities that have already done this are looking And I will say, a lot of the communities that have already done this are looking at this exact thing, and we see a little bit of fluctuation in what they're comparing it to. So there's quite a few that compare it to an office use, and then there are others that compare it to a medical office use. And so the medical office use is a little bit reduced in where that is allowed zoning-wise. But that's where most of the jurisdictions are falling in what they are comparing this to and what they've modeled it after. Um, so then the
where, where are we falling?
With this proposal?
Yes, we are falling, as staff has mentioned, we are comparing this to an office.
Okay.
Not a medical office, which based on our definitions and our code, we felt that it was too different to say that we should zone it that way. But that's not to say that you can't make that argument, if you believe it to be so.
Okay.
Medical-related.
Commissioner Connerton.
So, yeah, I, you answered two of my questions. Thank you, Joy, for doing that. I'm thinking more in terms, just because, you know, medical is always in my brain, and too bad Connie's not here, but it does seem like a medical use. You know, it's a human service, it's therapy, all those term, that terminology is being used. So it feels like a medical office use. You know, obviously, it's gonna have to be a carefully monitored situation. People can actually have anaphylaxis to some of this stuff. So I guess I would make the argument for medical office use, but I would need to understand, like, how that limits, you know, these people who would apply for these permits. And then there was just one other thing, and I think you were probably gonna go there next, was this is not people who are gonna be growing it, right? Or they will be growing their own mushrooms? I guess I got, I got lost there somewhere. Or is that next?
The, the cultivation facility is industrial uses.
Yes.
Absolutely not a use that we deem appropriate for a residential or most commercial areas.
Right. Okay. But anyway, so back
Not personal cultivation. This is a
Right.
Commercial cultivation is what I'm talking about there.
Okay. Yep, got that.
I haven't read the finer details on the personal cultivation, so I'll leave that to Carl.
Oh. Okay, he's an expert. Excellent. Okay, and so I guess that's just one thing I'd like to maybe, I don't know, kick around with all of us. And then you were, you mentioned something about the hours of operation, you know, kind of just being similar to marijuana shops, which makes a lot of sense because that's something that other communities are doing. And then did you already, can I bring up the number of permits? That would be
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think one thing, you're, you're moving into our discussion.
I am, you're right, never mind. Okay, stop. Me.
No, it's okay.
Did you wanna see the industrial zoning areas as well?
Yeah.
Which is actually fairly
My question will be about the micro treatment facilities. And I guess, you know, we might have to discuss that too, but as of now, are, are we seeing if they're, if they're adding the psilocybin to an existing practice, will we make them subject to the distance barrier? If it's just the micro treatment center, would they be subject to the distance barrier? Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
So I'll finish up with the zoning on the more industrial uses, which again is the cultivation facility, products, manufacturer, and the testing facilities. So we listed that as a special use permit in our M1 zone district, which is mixed-use corridor. Again, mixed-use corridor allows for residential uses, a lot more than our heavier commercial. So this is one of our lighter commercial and allows for, I put it more in a transitional district. There's a lot of uses going on there. So we thought that that was one that might require some scrutiny that's provided in the special use permit. So that, if someone wanted to locate in the M1, which is the very light pink, you can see that in North Glenwood, outside of the dark, purply-pink color, which is our commercial. And so we listed that as special use, so that means if they wanted to provide that, or cultivate, or do products, manufacturing, or testing facilities, they'd need to apply. And it would be seen before you, and you would be the authority of approval on that, to deem if it is appropriate for where they are deciding to locate. So that's a special use, and we made it a permitted use in the commercial, which is a little bit more heavy on the commercial side and not a mix of uses so much. And then in our industrial, which is our I2, we don't have a lot of this area, but it's this dark purple that you see here along the river. And that, Deveraux, if you've driven down it, the uses that are occurring there are already kind of warehouse manufacturing. We do have some marijuana cultivation that has been down there historically and larger commercial entities. And so those two uses would be permitted, uses by right, are commercial and our industrial river. And then special use in the M1 is where staff started with. Any questions on the zoning, or if you want me to zoom into a particular place, your home, per se?
What is tested? I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It's where you have the specific, no. It's, no, I'm, I'm sorry. It is actually part of the, like, testing for efficacy, that kind of thing, right? Like, so you have, like, you know, grow and production and testing. And then treatment, those are kind of the four big categories state has looked at.
Okay. Commissioner White.
So Hannah, just kind of uh, quick and dirty, if we were to move to a more of a medical office module, how would that change the zoning restrictions?
Yeah, let me actually pull that up. And share on that guy. So you can see where medical office falls. But what I'm pulling up is our full table of allowed uses. So this is all of our zone districts, all of our uses. Hopefully, I can zoom in here a little bit. So under healthcare facilities is our broad title, and then we have hospital and medical or dental clinic. This is the one thing, you can't see where it starts at. But the main difference, let me zoom up real quick. Might not actually be a difference at all. Because it also starts, medical or dental clinic also starts in residential transitional. And it is permitted uses. My apologies, I misspoke. That's actually closer. It looks like office and medical share the same number of permitted uses through our zone, and they start in RT. Must have been thinking of somewhere else.
Okay. Other questions? Let me see which ones I have that are a question versus conversation. So, so I guess, as I was reading through it, as reading fines and all, so, so is, and this is just an understanding of, of the regs, but is it, can, can anyone, you know, as marijuana, can you, can you cultivate your own mushrooms at home? And, because I thought I read that the fine is a hundred dollars if you're caught with mushrooms and a slap on the wrist, or I mean, it seemed pretty, pretty minor. So I was just trying to understand.
Yeah.
What's, what's the
You know, honestly, I can't speak that because we've been so focused on the kind of larger licensing. I don't, I don't see us enforcing against at-home grow if it's not a commercial operation. If you go with licensing, one of the interesting things about this product is all of licensing is being handled through the state. We don't have a role in that. And so I'm going to kind of defer to the state too on enforcement, frankly. On if you had somebody who's growing in a residential neighborhood, I think that would be the appropriate enforcement mechanism rather than local zoning or local PD. And that's just a function of the way they've set it up, is being totally centralized at the state.
Okay. So, so we're only doing it just for the, for the therapy?
Right.
Kind of thing. I mean, that's what, that's what this is all of.
The, you know, there's decriminalization of some things that don't pertain to what we do here in a municipal setting.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner White.
Is there any sort of tax revenue that we're generating off of mushrooms like we did with marijuana? Or do?
My understanding, and I'll have Carl fact-check me on this. My understanding is the way that it's set up, it's not the sale of the product itself? Well, no, actually, it says decriminalizing the sale and use of psychedelic mushrooms in the legislation. I do not know.
Okay. That's okay, that's not what we're voting on.
At this point, to the extent there was a sale, and it is not excluded currently from the list of goods that are not subject to sales tax, it would be subject to sales tax, but is separately identified from the service that's being provided. Sales tax should be applied. Now, as you know, there's a lot of exemptions in our code and at the state level regarding, you know, medical devices and various things that are not subject to food items, not subject to sales tax. Thinking about it right now, I don't, I don't think it's on, it wouldn't be excluded for city tax if it were separately listed from the service.
Okay, Commissioner Connerton.
So just for the, going back to the cultivation centers, is that's just that one strip, right, on Deveraux where it could potentially go?
No, the one strip along Deveraux highlights the industrial river district, which is allowed. And so it's also allowed in CO, permitted use in commercial and I2.
So does that come back to us when a cultivation center? I guess, just because I wasn't on any of, like, the marijuana centers or anything, but like, I mean, there is gonna be waste with these centers. I mean, I've seen these down in, not here, it was a different state. But they do create, like, big piles of organic material and like, is that something that would come back to us, or is something the city regulates?
Only come to you with the special use permit, which we put under as M1. So on the permitted use by right in CO, as proposed, in CO and I2, no, it would not come to you. They would have to abide by all the state regulations and any additional, which is a component of this, use-specific regulations that the city decides to put on it. So in our use-specific code, use-specific standards code, which comes after the table of uses, there are a lot of uses that we list in our table as permitted use by right. However, there's a little asterisk off to the side that says, "But, you've gotta do it this way." So you go to a different section of code, like short-term rental is an example of that. We say, yep, it's permitted anywhere that residential is allowed, but here's the long list of things you gotta do to actually be in compliance. So you guys have the opportunity to add those types of standards, along with the hours of operation. I'm not quite sure on the state side if they regulate that, so we could certainly check if that's a concern. I would imagine that they do, but I'm not recalling off the top of my head. We have standards for uses themselves, so like outdoor storage, things of that nature are regulated in code for a lot of our other uses.
Yeah, because if there's like a big pile of organic material, it's definitely gonna smell, so, but
And there, I think actually that would fall under our nuisance category.
Yeah, okay.
Of things that our police department and code enforcement could go out and say they're, they're general nuisance that applies to, like, everywhere in the city, smell being one of them.
We're gonna have a bunch of
Crash, hall weeds, those types of things.
We don't want a bunch of bears tripping.
There's a movie about that.
I thought it was marijuana.
The same outcome.
Yes.
It could be anything. It's a ladder drug.
Maybe they'll leave a long line.
Okay, okay. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Cowan. I was adding to that.
I guess, kind of in that vein, going to the treatment centers now, is that? And maybe picking up a little bit of what Carl was saying there, would this be more centralized? So if I'm a provider, so for comm dev, we get a application come through, someone wants to provide, the stipulations, requirements for how that office has to look, function in those therapy sessions, is that being passed on through the licensure process, through the state, or is that something that we need to?
It's all being handled through the state licensing process. There's about, I don't know, eighty pages of regulations related to this that they've been updating, it feels like about every two weeks, as they refine the regs. But it, it lays out in that for each of those kind of four big categories, you know, what, what you have to provide. Everything from, you know, proof of possession of the premises, whether it's through a late lease or ownership, your security measures, all of those kinds of things, and it's all tied to that state license.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, I, I have one other question too, and I think I read this, but you kind of Commissioner Connerton made me think of it. So is, is the only other state that has this organ? Is that, is that what I read, that there is one other state that is already down this path?
My understanding, yes.
I thought I saw that in the
And they're about a year ahead of us.
Yeah, I used to live there, that was a Okay. Okay, any other, any other questions? Okay, and, and you know, what I would like to do would be to let, if you're okay, to just move through on this, because we're having this whole discussion.
That's why I brought it out to action items.
And So, so what I was thinking on the process was that, you know, we'll get comments from the public if there's any, but then, but then, because we're just making a recommendation, right? So we don't need to necessarily, we don't need to make a motion and, and, I mean, we
You know, follow the same motion, second, and vote.
And do your find, do the find, I mean, as we're changing
Yeah.
findings, I mean, already there's a lot of changes I can tell that we're gonna have, so. Okay. Any comments from the public? Is anyone from the public here or online? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Okay, so I think now it comes back to the commission to make a motion of how we go forward.
I'm doing it.
Okay, Commissioner White.
I'll make a motion to approve action item seventy sixty-four, or sorry, per section seventy sixty forty. Action item one, code amendment to consider to zone and codify use standards for natural medicine businesses in Glenwood Springs to comply with the Colorado Regulated Natural Medicine Rules for Proposition 122 and Senate Bill twenty-three two ninety, with the staff recommendations on fin, and findings on pages nine through ten.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Connerton.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so let's open it for conversation. I mean, I, you know, if anyone has any feedback or whatnot before we call the questions, so.
I do. I, I think I would recommend putting buffer, buffer zones in place, and I like the idea of the thousand feet buffer zone from any other existing facility. I think that that, like you said, Hannah, it controls, it just naturally controls how many how many spaces we're gonna have opening up. And I think it's something that we probably could revisit if for some reason we're finding it too prohibitive or not prohibitive enough in the future, don't you?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. As we've seen with marijuana, those regulations have changed over time since its initial application. So it is something that you could look back ten years and be like, eh, maybe we wanna move the mark.
And then the only other thing was, I, I agree, I agreed with Commissioner Connerton that they should be treated like medical facilities or offices, but to see that that zoning doesn't shift on any level makes me happy.
Okay. Commissioner Connerton.
Yeah, and I mean, I would also like to recommend, like, instead of, like, placing an arbitrary, arbitrary, like, cap on the number of permits, but you know, just consider like a permit-based system. I know that, you know, we're going online with our permits these days, but you know, just kind of base that on community demand. You know, like, if we get a lot of demand, we might have to periodically assess, like, should we put a cap on it? I'd like to make that recommendation to the commissioner, the city council. And then I agree with Commissioner White on the buffer zone with a thousand feet. And then also to have, like, similar hours to the marijuana shops. You know, I don't know. I mean, these are a little different, though. It's not like more where people are, you know, it, it feels like if you're going into an office space at ten PM, I don't know, and there's a residential close by, I don't know, it just seems a little later, maybe, but I guess you don't really put hours on office spaces.
You can.
I know, it just, it seems like it should be in alignment with like, you know, normal operating hours of other offices, but I, you know, instead of going all the way to, to that late, to ten, you know, it would be appropriate to keep it to like, you know, eight PM, because people can get out of work, they can get their therapy, then they can go home. I don't, it's just a thought. I don't know if that's putting too much control on it, if everybody else agrees or disagrees. And then I think the last thing that I wrote was something that I can't access because I just froze my computer, so someone else can take a shot.
Okay, Commissioner Sipley.
I feel as though the marijuana regulation times of operation are adequate. In part, I think, you know, this, the type of therapy, it, it could work just as well at nighttime as it does in the day. Maybe it's a way people will, you know, they wanna go later so they can wind down or something, so I don't think it should be our business to regulate what time someone can go get treatment. You know, you can go to the emergency room anytime of night. And then in terms of the buffer, I worry how that might impact businesses who are already operating as medical offices. If they wanna bring in this minor component and they were already there, like I don't, I don't see how it's gonna be, you know. We don't even know how they'll be able to advertise, if it'll have to be somewhat discreet. But if it's in like a medical office park or complex, then we might be saying, oh, only one person in that whole complex could get this permit, whereas, I mean, there could be hundreds of medical offices in there, so I would be willing to consider the distance buffer for standalone like primary, but not for the micro therapy sessions or therapy offices. I don't feel like, I think this use is gonna, I mean, I frankly like to recommend there's some outdoor space that goes with it, but we might not be able to do that either and that perhaps that could be a side effect if they're not all allowed in the, if there's a thousand-foot barrier between the micro ones that pushes them farther out into the, you know, distant commercial zones. But yeah, I think, I think keeping the marijuana hours would be appropriate, but we'd like to continue discussion on the buffer.
Commissioner Connerton.
Oh. Do we talk about, I mean, I know this seems silly, but like in a, in a, if it's in these office settings, this is definitely different, I think, than just like a marijuana commercial zoning area. But is there like security that also needs to go along with?
So there again, the state regulations will control how all of that. I, I mean, it's, this is a little bit different, right? This is kind of that area where state is kind of fully exerting sort of a lot of, a lot of preemption around how this particular product is, is managed. What I will tell you as far as treatment centers goes, that there has to be a provider on site. They have to like see them from beginning to end. I, I think it's, you know, I think it is much more analogous in terms of how it will operate to kind of a normal, like you're going to see your therapist or you're going to see your doctor setting. Right? Because it's not like you can walk in and buy it and leave. And so it's not really a retail location when you're thinking about it underneath the current regulations. Whether at some point we see something like that, I don't know, but underneath the current ones, definitely the state feels like it's treating it as if you're going to your therapist's office.
Yeah. And one other recommendation I would like to make to the council is just like doing a periodic review of how it's going for some of these, because it is gonna be brand new, it's gonna, you know, we're only the second state to do it, but, I mean, I do still feel pretty strongly about the buffer zones. I think that will limit, you know, it, it could feel a little Wild West if we don't buffer it, and maybe during one of the periodic reviews, we could you know, discuss changing how those are, you know, functioning in our community. I don't know, it's just a thought.
Commissioner White.
I think actually what Carolyn said made, made good sense. I mean, I think about, you know, other, other treatment options like EMDR, so if you have, you know, a building like treads that has three therapists there and they all wanna utilize this as like a component of their treatment. On some levels, I could see that being punitive, not being able to do that with a buffer zone. But I think I agree that the actual like testing and, and grow facilities should have that buffer zone. Yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of backing off of, of the in-office buffer zone.
Commissioner Houghton.
I would just second that, and I think where I'm having trouble is the analogy to retail marijuana businesses, that seems like a different type of business. It's a service more than, well, it's not retail, it's, it's a service. I think that's where I'm struggling with our discussion here is, is the analogy or the comparison to retail marijuana.
Commissioner Connerton.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I, I don't, I'm not like married to the idea of the thousand-foot buffer zone when you put it in context for these micro areas, you know, where people are getting therapy in some of these office settings. I definitely agree with the cultivation. I think that's super important. But also if we have periodic reviews or if the city does, or however that would look, then if it seems, if it feels too Wild West, then we can, you know, revisit potentially having to establish some buffer zone. Or, you know, like there's five places and, you know, somebody feels, I don't know. Like it's too much, because also the community members who are experiencing like having some of these businesses near them or near a business that they frequent. I mean, if there's five places, maybe, you know, there might be some community feedback that could negatively impact you know, how many of those places are in one office space, so.
Okay. I'll weigh in here. My, so I, I like the medical office. I mean, it sounds like we're kind of like that, and, and I'm on the hours. I think I like the eight to ten hours because, you know, my, my take is that it is a treatment. So your treatment, let's say you get there at six, it may not be over till ten. You know, because you have to go through the whole thing, so it's not like you're showing it up at nine. You know, you're taking your dose and you're driving home, you know, I mean, that's not, that's not the point of what you're, of what you're doing. Well, I mean, I, I, I've heard a little bit from, from ketamine. I mean, I, I know a little bit about the ketamine thing. And, and I've seen people that have done it and, and you have to go through the whole process. You know, you get your application and blah, 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 here's, it's, it's a whole time thing, and I'm, this is assuming it's gonna be the same kind of thing, so I mean, I, that's where I think the eight to ten is a good time for people coming back. And, and the buffer zone, yeah, I'm kind of mixed with that too. I mean, I, I think it, it seems like if we're thinking of it as a medical office that where you have therapists that are together and all of that sort of thing, it seems like it makes sense, but then at the same time, and I, I start thinking of the word grandfathering in of therapists that are there already, and maybe that's not a fair thing. But it, it, it doesn't seem like in the Del Rippe property or places like that where you let it be, as you say, the Wild West, or you can have a lot of people close by, so that, that's for me, that's, that, that's a struggle with that. I mean, I like it, like around Valley View, like around maybe a shop, you know, but someplace where there's therapists there. To me, it seems like there shouldn't be a buffer zone, but I'm, I'm kind of torn with that as you get into some of the zoning districts that you went through. I guess that's, that, that's, that's a thing for me. And the grandfathering doesn't, you know, that doesn't seem fair, to be honest, but and then, then I think on the number permits, for me, it seems like the marketplace will regulate that on its own, you know, I mean, if you don't, if you're not getting enough clients, you go out of business, you know, I mean, it's kind of what we've seen with other businesses around here, but I mean, it seems like those were the only the, so, so what things are different in there that we've talked about than what, than the findings that you gave that you would coach us on talking about, or, or what do you need? Yeah, the timing or?
So the findings actually wouldn't change. You could hold the same findings. These are just you discussing use specific parameters that you wanna add to it, and it would still meet the same findings that staff went through.
Should, so should, so, well, I, I guess the question is, should we amend or, or add, do we need to add these? What's the, what's the right thing?
I mean, I think that, you know, for a clean recommendation going up to council, if there are, you know, a couple of these areas that you guys wanna make really, you know, out, different from what the staff recommendation is, whether it's hours, whether it's the zone districts, whether it's number of licenses, those kinds of things, I think that would be helpful that council would just be able to see that immediately in your recommendation rather than searching through the minutes.
Okay.
And I can pull up the criteria for you guys. You know, this is the standard code amendment criteria that has five consistent with the comprehensive plan and other city policies. That doesn't really, those don't kind of cross. So whether you change the hours, that, that can meet the comprehensive plan as well. Does not conflict with other provisions of the code. We've made sure that that isn't the case, and adding any of these additional use restrictions would not, so you're okay there. Three, four and five, so is necessary to address a demonstrated community need? You could bring under some of your arguments here that you see a community need for that particular standard to be in place. Is necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions and our policy? This is a pretty broad one, and what we're responding to is proposition one two, one two two. And the, you know, the past and the state, but you could make an argument there. And is consistent with the general purpose and intent of this code, so even if you are making additional standard changes from what we've discussed, it is still consistent with the general purpose and intent of the code, which is meant to regulate uses for the community. So I can bring those up if you want to expound on that.
So what?
Do we need to do that if, if, are we just like to add buffer zones to the, the cultivation facility, medicine products, manufacturer zones and the medical testing facilities? If we wanted to add the buffer zone and then the time restrictions, but I have to go back and cite all those things?
I think what Carl just mentioned is it would be helpful for council for, to see which areas you thought outside of staff's recommendation and use the findings to make the argument.
Could you pull those findings up? Thank you.
And I guess one, one, one question while you're pulling that up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I, I mean, honestly, because it's a recommendation, if you wanna do it without, I mean, I'm a little more flexible on the findings. I mean, I think they'd cover it. I think what I'd like to see from you guys is maybe to amend your motion to include hours of operations, eight to ten, if that's what you wanna do, include that, you, you know, there should be buffer zones for all except treatment facilities, and I can't remember what the third one was. That, that kind of clarity just in, in amended motion would be fantastic, because then council can just look at it and go, I understand where they were at.
What he said.
Okay, so I'll amend my.
So wait, I, I have a question before we, for, so, on, on the, on the buffer zones. So I guess one thing I kind of struggle with a little bit, I mean, I totally like having them clumped together, because it seems like they should be, but I guess, and, and, and I guess when you, we talked about medical office, which we didn't, I don't know if we need to make that change or not, even though it said all of the zoning was exactly the same as it is for an office. But I, and, and I guess the one thing that I, I'm just kind of throwing out for us is that, you know, to, to kind of your comment that, that like the Del Rippe property and, and then residential properties that you could have then, you know, each building could have, you know, and I, I don't know if that's a deal or not, but it seems like to me in, in a, in a residential space that that's a deal, and I don't know if that's something to worry about or not, or, I mean, it's, it's, it's a problem for me a little bit of I want them clumped, but I don't want them clumped in some places, and I don't know, I don't know if that makes sense or not to other people on the commission, or other people, what they think. And maybe, I don't, do you have any direction on that, or what do you think?
Well, I think if that's where you're headed, you could apply use specific standards by zone district. So there's one zone district that we've proposed as permitted for the centers that is RT, which is a residential zone district. You could absolutely make a specific use specific standard of these treatment centers occurring in residential zone districts, which would include RT. So I believe you could say a thousand-foot buffer between these centers in residential zone districts, but not have that apply in the commercial zone districts.
I think.
Commissioner White.
I, my problem with that is that there are those office spaces that are really close to Valley View Hospital, so then we're kind of penalizing those office spaces. Is there a way to make the language specific to actual residential units? In those, in that specific zoning district?
That would be slightly more challenging, because remember, our mixed-use zoning and commercial also allows for residential uses. So that would be maybe more complicated and probably limited in ways you're not intending it to.
I mean, there are protections in, like kind of natural protections in certain HOAs and things like that that don't allow you know, commercial office spaces.
Well, you can regulate time, place and manner. My question for you is, if the commission wanted to say make commercials in districts permitted, any residential zone district including a mixed-use, move that into a special use category?
There you go.
Yeah.
I like that.
And then that way we have met the requirement from the state that they're absolutely permitted in some areas, so the state can't say that we're making it too difficult to put one in. But it gives us the flexibility to use a special use permit when we're talking about mixed-use or residential zone districts.
I love it.
Yeah, then it comes back to you guys, just like any other special use permit, and you evaluate it based on the appropriateness, the location that they're.
That's perfect.
Okay, I'm good. Commissioner White.
This was the wrong one to do.
I'm waiting for my. In light. I'm trying to be good. Okay, we would like to add the, the eight to ten hour restriction on just the medicine centers, correct? Or does that apply to all of them? Sorry, that's a question that's not amending my motion.
I think what you said on the medical offices to me. I mean, do, do we need to change it to medical offices? Do we need to change your thing?
No, that was just a comparison.
Okay.
So we don't care about the other facilities?
They have to go within our.
Yeah, I don't, we don't care about that. Okay, okay. Okay, we don't care about that. They gotta cultivate all my laws, keep up with demand.
Yeah, that's because that's when the mushrooms grow at night. Okay, sorry, okay.
It is the Wild West in here. It is the Wild.
It's an interesting one.
Okay, okay. So we would like to add the condition to recommend that the medic, the natural medicine centers operate between eight and ten. We would like to add buffer zones for all but the natural medicine center facilities of a thousand feet of a buffer zone from any other existing unit, and then we would also like to add in the residential, any residential zone that the natural medicine center requires a special use permit.
Copy that.
Dick, Commissioner Connerton.
And I will second.
Okay, any questions? Okay, the one question I have was, so, so when I heard you say the buffer zone, so we have no buffer zones, right? Other than there's a special, I mean, for, and I'm, I'm not gonna say, I mean, you, you said it. I thought the way we wanted it to be, and I thought your.
No, I thought the motion was that there would be a buffer zone for cultivation, testing and manufacture, but not for natural medicine centers.
Other than residential?
Well, residential, residential is just a special use permit, there's not a buffer.
I said it exactly like. The residential, we see before.
Right, right. Okay. I'm good. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, let's call it, call the question.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. That's good. So now do we get some samples? Is it, is this in the shopping center?
Moving on to action item.
Elves. Okay, thanks, Hannah.
It's a fun meeting tonight. All right, so on to action item number two, which is additionally a code amendment as well. So we are looking at a specific use, which is shopping center. And staff in reviewing shopping centers and the definitions that we have, have found several instances in town where there are existing shopping centers that fall into the category that are prohibited in use in the zone district they're at. And after reviewing the zone districts that are currently allowed, staff does believe that there, it is worth expanding that to change the zoning allowances for retail shopping centers to be a permitted use by right in the M1, which is mixed use corridor district, and then also a special use permit in the M2 and RE resort zone districts. I included the comparison of definitions for shopping centers. This is what kind of led staff to this in the first place. Between retail shopping center and retail general, the main differentiation between these is that a retail shopping center includes more than one building. And otherwise it can fall into retail general. What I included in your staff report is just one example that staff found. This is in West Glenwood in the M1 mixed use corridor area where there is something that falls into the shopping center category because it has multiple buildings with multiple tenants in it. It's obviously a smaller scale than one of the larger, you know, traditional shopping malls that we're all used to. But there, there are several examples of that occurring. And then also with the definitions of the zone districts, M1, obviously, as I've talked about, is not quite, it's not quite as robust in the commercial as our M2 and 3, but we do believe it meets the intent of the codes to have that be an allowance there and a special use review. So more work for you guys and some of the other areas. The main reason we wanted that to be a special use is because we do see these occurrences of kind of small micro shopping centers, if you will, that are not the super large shopping malls, but are occurring and currently they're prohibited by our code. So we have some that are in existence and if they tried to majorly change their operations, we'd have to tell them that they can't operate. So this is one of those things that in the, in the implementation of our code, we run across and we try and clean up. So we're proposing a little bit of the change in the zoning districts. You can see this is our current table of allowed uses. And we, we break up retail general into over 1,500 square feet and under 1,500 square feet. So the larger retail areas, you can see that we allow that as a special use permit for you guys in the residential transitional district, and then it's permitted. And then we've got our retail shopping center, which doesn't give a definition of size that is prohibited until you get to M3, which as we know, does not exist in the city yet. And then is a special use in commercial and I2. So that is the proposal. We did the same analysis on the criteria for a code amendment, going along the lines of recognizing a change that needs to happen in the community. It is, meets our comprehensive plan, city policies, and consistent with the general purpose and intent of this code. And with that, I will open it up to questions on shopping centers.
Okay, any questions from? I see there's no questions. So we'll take comments from the public. I see there's no public in attendance. So we will, so we will close the public comment. We'll bring it back to the, to the commission for a motion. Commissioner Connerton.
Okay. For action, item number two, code amendment, to consider a code amendment to correct the zoning allowances for shopping centers to be included as a permitted use by right in M1 mixed use corridor district and a special use in M2 mixed use central core and RE resort zone district. I, I motion to approve with the findings and conditions on page nine through 10.
Okay, we have a motion.
And I will second.
And a second by Commissioner Sibley. Any comments or? Okay, let's call the question.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Okay. I think that closes everything for the new, new items. Commissioner comments? We'll start.
Oh, no, thank, oh. Nope, thank you. Thank you for showing us the magic mushrooms.
You have nothing? John?
I just encourage everyone to have their input for the community safety action plan. I think is what it's called. Traffic safety, pedestrian safety, et cetera. If you haven't weighed in, weigh in.
Thanks, John. Commissioner White. Nothing. The only ones I think, I'm just going to kind of cue up Hannah. I know she's probably talking about these anyway, but is, is the new permit process? And then we have a special meeting coming up, I guess those are the, those are the two kind of questions I have, so. And thank you very much for the dinner, it was very good. Marcelon curry, we liked Marcelon curry, it was very good. So thank you, or thanks to whomever did that.
Yeah, so I'm actually going to give you guys a quick demo in my director comments of the new system. You deserve it. It's fantastic. I've been slaving away all day on it, so why not a little bit more? Before I do that, you guys probably saw, we do have a special meeting that is scheduled for Monday, March 10th, where we will be discussing another code amendment before you related to zoning reform and density that you have seen before. So I know some of you possibly had mentioned you weren't able to make it, but if you want to just confirm if that works for you, want to make sure we have a quorum, but it did seem like we had most of you that were available and Carl as well. Dinner again will be served. I wouldn't forget you guys, I won't skip on that. So thank you for taking the time to allow us to add that in for timing purposes. You know, we have a lot of public notice deadlines that we have to meet, so if one passes, we kind of miss an opportunity. We can't schedule it with you guys necessarily because you're a single time a month, so a little bit more challenging, so I appreciate the extra time. And I'm going to jump up and give you a quick demo of the new permitting and license system that went live on Monday. So let's see here. Share screen. Okay, so this is now what the public sees. This is our, I'm going to call it the resident access portal. It's just our portal. And so now if you have a building permit, a land use application, you need to pay an invoice for any of those things. You want to access our map or you want to report a community development issue and a link to our city website. This is the new all encompassing portal for people to access everything that community development does and permits. So it's a monumental effort that has taken 12 months to get here because we had to program every last one of our permits, which you guys are intimately aware of. There's a lot of them, except for a fence permit. We don't have that coming soon to you. But so this is what we launched. It went live on Monday, so you can see we've got some guides over here on how to register. This does require that as a resident who wants to apply for a building permit, you register for an account because that's how we communicate with you. You put in your email, your contact information. So when you submit a building permit, that's how we communicate what's happening. We've got a how to apply for a permit guide. We also have a contractor's license guide. So let's see. I am set up as a user. The one thing that's also nice, our utilities department has a user portal that some of you might use for payments. If you have a login for that, it is the same for this because it is the same system. So let's see if it's going to let me do it. That would be funny. It might not.
You don't have the right permissions.
There might also be, I'm not quite sure which network this is on. Yeah. Let's see if, oh, well, I'm already logged in, so look at that. So I just clicked on the apply button up here and this takes you to our application assistant. So look at this, you can see building permit applications that are currently trending because it's so trendy in our department. It's hot up there. You guys didn't know, we're very trendy. Then you can click on license, so this is going to be your professional license if you're a contractor. This is the new portal that you will apply and renew all of your contractor licenses. The great thing about that, if you, any of you have ever submitted a building permit and listed a contractor, and then one of my staff calls you back and says, that contractor doesn't have a license with the city, that will no longer happen because all of our licensed contractors are in our system and it will tell you immediately when you try to apply that that one's approved or that one needs to come get a license. So that's a great function. Really what this program is trying to cut down on is some of the back and forth interactions that we have with people that slow down permits or are sometimes frustrating because the general public doesn't know which contractors are licensed or not. So as soon as they put one in here in an application, they'll be able to see it and know that they can't submit without a licensed contractor in the city of Glenwood Springs. Then we get to our permits. This is mostly focusing on building permits, but you can scroll down this list. New construction, demolition, new installation, plumbing permits, gas lines, emergency sewer lines, things of that nature are all falling under this, so you just peruse and then click on it to apply. And then what you guys deal with most is the planning module. And this is all of our land use applications. So you can see accessory dwelling unit right off the top, an appeal, backyard chicken permits, flood plain permits, location and extent. Everything requires a pre-app meeting, but this is a long list. Each one of these painstakingly programmed over the last 12 months to operate within this system. Chicken, we want to apply for a backyard chicken permit? All right. Let's do it. Eggs are, eggs are very trendy right now. Fingers crossed. They're out of eggs, come back later. This, hmm, maybe no chickens. Let's see if something else loads. Accessory dwelling unit. Well, that's unfortunate. You guys will each, I'll send you guys an email with these links so that you can poke around. In the live link, you can do this as well. I wouldn't submit the application because then it will come to us. But if you want to test it out, you certainly can and go in from your, your own computers. I'm not quite sure why that's not loading. Do not use, you guys don't have city emails. Your utility, yes, if you have a login for utilities that you go and check, you just, instead of registering for an account, just log in and it should recognize that so that you've got access to this. I'll show you guys how you get to this. So this is the community development department page from the city website. We've got building and planning as parts of these, and both of these have a special announcement at the top with links to get here. So we've removed all of our paper building permit applications and paper land use applications, and you can no longer email or turn in a hard copy. That's not to say that if someone doesn't have a computer or is very uncomfortable using a system like this, that we won't assist you in putting it in. There may be an administrative cost associated in doing so that we kind of prevent that from being like the default. But truly, this is designed to be very user friendly for the general public, based on feedback that we've had with how our permitting process happens now, which is usually paper, hard copy, and not incredibly transparent for the user itself. The one thing, let me see if I can.
Can you do it from a mobile phone?
I don't think you'd want to, but yes. So each of the applications will require you to input, I mean, if you're comfortable in a tiny little screen, more power to you. But then most applications are also going to require you to upload documents. If you've got them on your phone, I don't see there's any reason why not. I'm not sure that we've optimized it for mobile viewing necessarily.
Hannah, is there any sort of like survey at the end of any of these applications that like would be an easy way to get feedback from the users on the process?
We don't have a survey attached to this, but one thing that city council recommended after their debut of this was that we poll the first 10 applications that come in to ask them how it was. And we're, so we went live on Monday and staff has been up there helping people through this, so we are getting immediate feedback as well as, I think we're probably going to wait on the true feedback of the system for a little bit because we're still working out the kinks of turning on a system that took 12 months and recognizing it's not perfect. We did miss things because we're humans. And so as the lovely guinea pigs that are coming through yesterday and today, we're in real time making those tweaks. We've got the community development conference room set up where me and tech support is listening to what's happening at the counter and furiously making changes to make sure that it goes smoother, which is what we expected. This was not going to be perfect ever.
Right, and maybe more like on a long range approach, just like not necessarily somebody that has just filled out an application, but maybe like at the end of the entire process, application process, like some sort of auto survey that goes out on just assessing the planning process, the building.
Absolutely, and we, we want to get that feedback, that feedback. This is designed. We're a little, admittedly, we're a little busy right now. This is meant to solve a lot of the problems that we have, so we would love to hear the feedback that like, yes, it did, or, oh, you kind of missed the mark. What's lovely is we're able to make those changes and city council gave us a couple suggestions as well that they wanted to see, so.
Can, can you look at, like, let's say my neighbor's doing something and I want to know, maybe I'm snooping or, or, or maybe I have some work that's going to be done at my place and I want to know if my roofer got a permit to do that. I mean, is that, is that something I can pull up and check on that, like?
So.
I'm even talking about my own.
We have that capability, but we are not turning it on currently. And some of the reasoning behind that, while some of that information is great, it can also be utilized in a challenging way. And so we want to launch the, the best parts of this program and start to evaluate if that's information we actually want to put out there. You know, we field calls on, you know, does my neighbor have a permit for the construction that I see while peeking over the fence at 10:00 PM at night? And we're happy to look that up on our side and provide that information how we have traditionally done, so we're not moving to where we want everyone to be able to access all the different permits. It's just, it can open up a can of worms that we're not ready for yet, but we will continue to evaluate that possibility.
I mean, I'm, I'm even thinking about work that maybe I'm hiring a subcontractor.
Where, where maybe I'm hiring a subcontractor to do some work to make sure that they did things appropriately or that, so that, that would be a call to, to the planning.
And we field those calls all day, every day. Is this person, you know, is this person a licensed contractor? Where have they worked before? We don't necessarily usually hand out that information, but most of the time, we want to make sure that the contractor that you're hiring for the job is licensed and knowledgeable and has all the required licensures that they need. So that component of this is, is really exciting that we don't have to taste that so much anymore.
Okay, Commissioner Connerton?
Well, yeah, just to piggyback on what you were saying, does eventually, like, say you flip that switch and everybody can see what's, what, who applied for a permit, does that go first before like a public notice? You know how you have to put up a public notice saying this is going to be, if you have any, you know, want to talk about it, if it's a development or something, isn't there like a sign you have to? If it's a development or something, isn't there like a sign you have to put up?
We do have public noticing requirements for land use applications, but not for building permits.
Ah, okay.
No, it's not a stupid question. It's not at all. Um, so this would be more as Commissioner Wall, Chair Waller has been talking about of being able to pull up. And this has benefits, obviously, for property owners, right? That's what we currently do in our jobs is take, uh, you know, I'm buying a property at ten, ten grand. What's been done there? What's the permits that are approved? Or is this um, ramshackle uh, residential unit in the basement actually permitted? So there are applications that's beneficial to a property owner to be able to click on a property and pull up everything. But there, there's the flip side of that that also allows for um, some interesting relationships between neighbors. Police, yes. So it's, it's something that we wanted to focus on getting this program out and we will continue to evaluate. Our um, contractor who's helping us with this, that works for the company that runs the program, gives us advice like how many cities actually choose to do that, that they have customers. And it's more that choose not to than choose to. Um, so if I need to call up those communities that decided to do it and get a report card on how that's going, do that as an evaluation later.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was just thinking that if you're hiring a contractor to do a driveway, you know, there's one down the street from, from me and they, and, and they ended up getting red tagged and, you know, and probably the, you know, the, the property may, owner may not have known at all, you know, that the contractor wasn't licensed, they, they didn't do blah, blah, blah. Well, now, I'm, well, exactly. After you get red tagged, you know that, but you don't wanna get to that point. I guess that's kind of my.
Well, now you won't get to the red tag because your contractor isn't licensed because it tells you and it won't let you apply.
Well, as long as you ask them and you make sure. I'm just saying you have to follow through with that, so. Okay, John.
Did all the current, like, in processing?
We know.
Did, did all the in-process and issued permits and applications get migrated to this? Are you working in two different systems?
No. Um, so when we were asked if we wanted to do that, it was an additional six months of work. And I wanted to keep my staff. Um, we didn't migrate our old system, which is actually a DOS-based system called Unix. I'm happy to see that most of you know what that means because, you know. Um, so it's very old. I believe it came out when I was born in nineteen eighty-two.
Yeah.
And so it's limping along and we didn't wanna do the migration because a lot of what we have in that system is not great, so we didn't wanna do garbage in, garbage out. So we have, what staff has also been doing is entering in the permits that have, you know, you applied for a single family building permit six months ago, you're actively in construction, you still have um, inspections. We have brought that permit in so that we can finish it in the new system. And then we'll still reference the old system as long as we can, you know, read the I's and the O's um, to get reports.
I mean, it's exciting, it is exciting.
Um, so sorry it didn't quite um, work here, but I am excited for you guys to try it out and use it and also give your feedback kindly. Um, because I also wanna keep my staff after the program. Chickens, short-term rental permits. But also, one of the things that I mentioned to city council and you guys being on this board, that's great, is for you to be able to tell people that you know that this exists. We're trying to get the word out as much as possible. Inevitably, there's going to be frustrations about having to sign up for a new system and that change can be challenging, so please, if you talk to people out in the community, let them know that this is a service that is designed to be more helpful for them. And if they want to share their feelings, they are more than welcome to come to community development and we will help them uh, through the process.
You know, uh, one, one question I had, when you put up the page that had the chickens and all of that stuff on there, do, does, does that help people um, when they don't know when they need to do a permit and all? I mean, so, so you know, here's a list of all the permits you need to do. They might think, hey, I'm just, I'm not changing anything. Why do I need a permit? But no, you needed a permit.
What I uh, found was a hilarious comment from city council when we showcased this, is like, so, is it safe to say Hannah, that if the permit is not on the list, you don't need a permit? And while I was very hesitant to answer that question, yes.
That was, that was my question.
We have put in all of the permits, so maybe a good homework item for you is to go on to this and look, look through.
I don't either.
Look through. I'm back with your questions. Um, we have a ton of permits, so if we missed one, we'll find it as soon as someone, you know, yanks out a noble fir somewhere and uh, but um, but that is the case. We want every permit that we offer on there because every application that we take should be through that system.
Good job Hannah. Check that out.
So that's all I have for you guys. Um, I'll, we'll be sending out the packet for the March 10th meeting and then we'll still have our regular scheduled meeting at the end of March as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I think we are complete. Well, adjourn the meeting.